Call a meeting, order. Jennifer, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I need approval of the March 27, 2014 minutes. Are presented changes or additions? Need to hear them at this time.
Move approval of the point. Second.
Motion second to approve as reported, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes of March 27, 2014 are now official. Any council members in the audience that have overlooked? Rick, you want to give us a Nashville Next update?
Yeah. Tiffany's going to be presenting that right now. I didn't see her over there.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners and to the audience. Okay, that's better. Good afternoon, commissioners and audience. I'm going to provide an update to the commission and to the audience about what to expect from Nashville Next community outreach in summer 2014. All right, so Nashville, it's time to pick our future. The greatest trilogy ever made. Since February 2013, we've worked with the public and with community partners to establish a vision and guiding principles for Nashville's future. Now it's time to decide how that vision will play out on the ground by picking the development pattern that will shape how we live, work, and play in Nashville over the next 25 years. So the futures that we'll pick from are based on thoughts from last fall's growth mapping exercise, where we asked Nashvilleians to place an additional 200,000 people, 100,000 households, and 300,000 jobs throughout the city. And from that exercise, four big ideas emerged. So the first idea is that we continue to grow with policies that emphasize growth downtown, with sporadic growth in areas to the north and to the southeast of the downtown core. So this idea can be thought of as business as usual. The second idea that emerged from the public was the idea that most of the growth, new homes and jobs, should locate in downtown Nashville and in areas immediately surrounding downtown. So this idea, we can call an expanded downtown. The third idea that emerged from the public was the idea that Nashville's growth should mostly occur on our pikes and other major roads, with more intense development or community centers located at different points along them. So this idea, we can refer to as pikes with community centers. And finally, the fourth idea that emerged was the idea that there are more major centers of bustling activity in different areas of town, with more intense residential development surrounding them, so more residential infill. And so we can call this future centers with residential infill. So what's important to note about each of these futures is that each will have different implications, ranging from how our transportation networks will function, to how the growth pattern may impact our children and youth. How the impact of these issues will, and all the impact of these issues will be scored. So for example, if a future, a future may do awesome on preserving affordability, but may not score well on the issue of equity and fair housing for everyone. So if affordability, if affordability is an issue that's important to you, you might desire that future. If equity is what you value, then you may pick another future where it has a more positive outcome. So each future will impact something that's important to you, and it's up to Nashvilleians, you, to pick which future you preference, based on what's important to you. So after everyone has picked their future based on issues that are important to them, Nashville Next will combine those preferences into one preferred future. And the aim here is to bring all the strengths of each future together, creating a future or development pattern that positively impacts, affects the issues that Nashvilleians most care about. Okay, Nashville, so there are several ways that you can pick your future this summer. First, you can pick in person by dropping in at Nashville Next lounges. These casual open houses will be designed for folks to drop in, speak with planners, relax, and complete a survey in a non-community meeting environment. I know you guys maybe like the sound of that. And how much time you want to spend at the lounge is really up to you. So we've made it a very casual environment for you to drop in. The Nashville Next staff is providing locations across the county, but we're focusing in on places that have seen less participation over the course of the process. So that includes areas mostly to the east of the county and in the south and northwest parts of the county. In all, we're planning for 25 different locations countywide. You can pick with others at community events this summer. So during the summer months, Nashville Next travels to different fairs and events that happen over the summer. Last summer, we attended 10 community events. We've done 46 community events since February 2013. So we're anticipating focusing on four events this summer that will target groups that we really need to hear, to hear more from. Okay? We often understand that it's hard to attend additional meetings, so we're offering a tool called Meetings to Go, so that you can discuss Nashville Next issues with groups that you're perhaps already meeting with. So meaning your civic groups, your HOA, your book club. It's an opportunity for you to host a Nashville Next meeting on your own time. Very soon, groups will be able to reserve packets online in preparation for distributing these Meeting to Go packets in June. So be on the lookout on our website to RSVP if you want to reserve a packet. You'll be able to pick on the go, and this is for texting. This is a texting tool that will enable busy Nashvilleians to still be involved in the process. So you can text us your preferred future if you're, say, waiting in line at your local coffee shop, or waiting to renew your tags, which can often be a long process, or waiting to be seated at your favorite restaurant. And finally, for those that like to get online, we've got that for you, too. With various web tools available, Nashvilleians will be able to pick their future online or weigh in on goals and policies that will help shape Nashville's future. The Nashville Next team also understands that there are barriers to civic participation, no matter how much, how many different outreach tools we provide. And so Nashville Next will host focus groups with hard-to-reach populations to allow the opportunity for those groups to weigh in on Nashville's future. This will typically include our new arrivals and our immigrant community, and also our very low-income populations. In addition to those very focused conversations, we'll also host community conversations to discuss topics that have risen as being very important to Nashvilleians. Those topics will include affordable housing and gentrification, culture and creative placemaking, transportation, and local and economic, local economic development. The public's opinions on these topics will help inform the goals and policies that will help shape Nashville's future. So I ask everyone to look for us mid-June through August of 2014. If you have any questions about any of the outreach opportunities that I've noted here, you can visit our website at NashvilleNext.net. Or if you have any detailed questions, you can also email us, questions@nashvillenext.net. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. You got a follow-up, Rick?
No, I mean, the process we're going through right now is to, is to take the scenarios and to put them through testing, the testing through the resource teams and as well as modeling. And so that information's going to be particularly relevant in terms of providing the community the options. This summer, as Tiffany said, we're going to be moving into, with the community in terms of developing the preferred alternative. And then that will lead into the fall with taking the preferred alternative, which will be the framework for the update of the 14 community plans.
Jennifer, any items to be deferred or withdrawn?
There's one item for deferral. It's item number three on the agenda, 2014 S. 036001. This is 1132 Tulip Grove Road. It's a request for a concept plan approval to create 19 clustered, single-family lots on property located at 1132 Tulip Grove Road, zoned RS 7.5. It is staff recommendation to defer this item to the May 8, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to defer item number three? Second? Motion second for item number three, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent for the day, Jennifer?
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. With regard to the items on consent, a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on today's consent agenda. Item number one, 2014 CP 00001, Lupa translation to CCM policies. A request to amend the Bordeaux-Whites Creek-Donelson-Hermitage-Old Hickory Downtown-East Nashville-Green Hills Midtown-Jolton-Parkwood Union Hill-South Nashville-and-the-Southeast Community Plans by translating Lupa land use policies to CCM land use policies. Staff recommendation is to approve. This will become effective with any new applications made for the June 12, 2014 filing deadline. Item number eight, 2014 SP 020001, Fountains-Germantown. A request to rezone from IR to SPMU zoning for properties located at 302 Taylor Street, 1408 and 1410 Fourth Avenue North, and 1401 and 1403 Third Avenue North, to permit up to 249 multifamily dwelling units, and all uses permitted by the MULA zoning district. It is staff recommendation to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number nine, 2014 SP 021001, 1007 and 1009 North Fifth Street. A request to rezone from RS 5 to SPR zoning for properties located at 1007 and 1009 North Fifth Street, to permit up to four detached, single-family dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve preliminary SP with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 10, 2014 Z 023 PR 001. A request to rezone from CN to MUNA zoning for property located at 5916 Morrow Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 12, 2014 S. 044001, Forte Property. A request for concept plan approval to create one lot and extend Summit Oaks Court on property located at Old Hickory Boulevard, zoned R 20. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 13, 2014 S. 049001, HG McNabb Resubdivision Lot 31. A request for final plat approval to create two lots and an exception to the shared access requirement for property located at 3200 Harland Drive, zoned RS 7.5. Staff recommendation is to approve. Under Other Business, item 14, Contract Between the Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and Gresham Smith &amp; Partners for professional services related to the conduct of State Route 109 Access Management Study. Item 15, Employee Contract Renewal for Brandon Burnett. And item 19, Accept the Director's Report and Approve Administrative Items. Does that mean we recap the numbers?
Yeah, if you would just give us the, the item numbers, make sure we got them.
Sure. So the consent agenda includes item number one, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 19.
The commissioners, you've heard the ones the staff has recommended be on consent. Is there a motion to approve those?
Mr. Chairman, just a note for the record that Commissioner Blackshear has to recuse herself on items 10 and 13.
Right.
Okay, so noted. We've got a motion as second on the items that were read out for consent, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items have now been officially approved.
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Lehman. Okay, it should say item two, but this is a request to amend a portion of the Nashboro Village Planned Unit Development Overlay District at the corner of Flintlock Court and Nashboro Boulevard, outlined in red. This was deferred at your last meeting, and the public hearing was, was kept open to allow the council member and the property owner, the new property owner, to have more time to discuss this, this request. This amendment has been requested by the council member. And staff recommendation is to disapprove the council bill as submitted, but approve a substitute council bill with amendments to that bill. This is a planned unit development that was originally approved in 1979, and it was last amended by council for this, this portion was last amended in 1983. And this portion of the PUD was designated for commercial uses that were neighborhood scale in nature. The proposed amendment would restrict uses, uses on this portion of the PUD, limit the height to one-story, provide landscape buffer requirements, and additional design guidelines for parking and building materials. As I stated, this plan was approved in 1983. It's not a real detailed plan for this portion, but it was approved for 23,275 square feet of neighborhood commercial uses in a one-story building. The community plan policy for this area is suburban neighborhood center, which calls for one-story. It also encourages pedestrian-friendly streetscapes and, and connections. It also outlines a requirement for one row of parking in front of commercial buildings. It's intended to enhance and create neighborhood centers that provide for a mixture of uses serving the immediate neighborhood around it. And what this, what this bill would do is, the first thing, it prohibits uses, and these, this is the list of uses that would be prohibited with this council bill. So there's various different uses that are outlined here. Some of these uses are not currently defined in the zoning code, such as flea market, transient lodging, beer and cigarette market, grocery store. These fall under other use categories in the zoning code. Flea market and auction house, those would be retail. Transient lodging would be hotel-motel. Beer and cigarette market would be retail. Grocery store would be retail. And so those are some of the things that aren't currently defined in the zoning code. Staff's recommending approval of an amended bill with, with some of these uses still being prohibited, but we've also recommended that additional uses be prohibited based on the community plan policy, including these lists of automobile type uses, that we find these would not be appropriate in the middle of the residential neighborhood of Nashboro Village. Some of the other things that this bill does is it regulates the, where parking would be located, landscape buffer yards, how buildings should have accented entrance features, and the type of materials that would be allowed for the, the commercial building. Staff's recommending some modifications to those conditions, as outlined on the screen here, to, to make these, make the conditions easier to regulate if, if a final site plan were to come in. We found that the, the way they were written originally would be difficult to regulate in, in terms of reviewing a plan against those conditions. So we modified those conditions to try to make them more clear, so that when a final site plan is submitted, there would be more detail to, to review those against. And with that, staff recommends disapproval of the bill as submitted, but approval with a substitute bill as outlined.
Thank you, ma'am. Items open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes, and they may hold back two of that for rebuttal if they would like.
Thank you, Secretary Bernhardt, Chair McLean, Chair Clifton, and all distinguished honorable Planning Commission members. I'm Councilmember Karen Johnson, and I represent the area, District 29, in which Site 15 Nashboro Village sits. And we respectfully ask today that you approve the staff recommendations on this bill. The substitute bill that is being offered on next reading at the council mirrors the planning staff's recommendation. And so we feel that we have worked diligently in coming up with the uses that we feel fit within the zoning code, as well as the new suburban neighborhood policy. If you recall, you as a commission approved our recent subarea plan with the suburban neighborhood policy for this area. And the uses that we have outlined in the substitute bill, which the staff has recommended for approval, all are aligned with that new policy. So there are no uses that are listed before you today that are not in the zoning code. They are in the zoning code, and they have been reviewed by planning staff and have been approved. These uses also were negotiated with the collaboration of the community and the former owner, which was Vassland, and the planning staff. So I do want to make that clear. We also did have a community meeting that was very well-attended. I do have the attendance sheet, which I will be submitting today as part of the record, and I will pass that around to each of you to see how many people attended that meeting. We had a great attendance. We had great dialogue with the new owner. One of the things that they did express as new owners, that they agree with all of the uses that are listed, but the only thing that they were not in agreement with was the height restriction. However, as you see from the staff recommendation, that the height restriction is part of the policy, and it is consistent with the surrounding parcels around this particular PUD. So changing the height on a policy that restricts the height on everything around it, I think would be contrary to what planning has designed this particular policy to do. Also, I think that in this meeting, we had learned also that the new owner did not seem to feel as though they may put a commercial-type establishment on this PUD. They may be looking at some type of housing. But I do want to reiterate that what you have before you today is commercial. And so it is not something that's dealing with any type of multifamily housing or anything of that sort. To close, what I would say is that we have worked tremendously hard. Former Commissioner Atkins, I believe you were on the council when the council unanimously voted in legislation which was signed by the mayor that created the periodic review process. So this is not something as a council member that's out of line with what we have established as metro government, as a process that we can utilize to limit uses, et cetera. So with that, I ask for your approval of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
You'll be allowed two minutes for rebuttal if you, if you'd like to. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in support? Would you like to speak? Come to the microphone, please. State your name and address.
Thank you. My, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name's Carla Snodgrass, and I live at 1037 Flintlock Court. I've lived at Flintlock Court now for 14 years, and it's an extremely diverse neighborhood. That neighborhood of housing goes all the way from Section 8 homes and subsidized housing through condominiums, apartments, all the way to residential homes facing the golf course that, that were centered around. And when we bought that home, the thought is, we're on a boulevard. Now, we're not Belmeed Boulevard, but to me, it's just as beautiful as Belmeed Boulevard is. It's very lovely, and the most people who use that property are using it residentially. My children grew up riding bicycles there. My grandchildren ride bicycles there. We go to the duck pond, we feed the ducks, we walk. We have all kinds of opportunities. It's very foreign to me to think that that piece of property could be anything other than something that complements a residential neighborhood. The thought of a convenience market there, any opportunity of any, and something that's large and just stands out. In the 14 years that I've lived there, there have been no businesses built in that, on that street, at all. It's all 100% residential. The only difference is, we have one home that was moved when they transitioned the Kroger shopping area there on Murphy's Borough Road, and someone took that and restored it. And so now we have a restored area there in a beautiful home that was very dilapidated. So I just ask you to support this amendment as the Planning Commission offered, because we don't want a convenience market. We don't want businesses that interfere with the importance of communities, because we know if families are going to be strong together, they need to be able to be in communities that are strong and not be in, in environments in which businesses just interlope in there. But I ask you again to approve this amendment as the Planning Commission's put forward.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Neil Urfer. My wife Pam and I have lived in Nashboro Woods subdivision for 17 years, and we've seen a lot of changes take place, positive and negative. It's obvious you all are familiar with the parcel that's subject of this meeting. Before you make any further decisions at all, whether anything happens with this property, I would urge a couple of you to just go down at peak-traffic times and see how much traffic is on that boulevard now. I can't imagine we need to add anymore. There's been over 200 townhomes built in the last 10 years, which has added, added to that, and any type of commercial property, I think, would be a detriment, not only to our neighborhood, but it would also be a safety concern from my perspective. But it's one thing to look at it on a map, but it's another thing to actually be standing on the parcel and, and see what activities taking place around it. I would definitely urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come to the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mr. Chairman, you were absent last time when we first heard this hearing recently with the new owners. And I represent the property owners. It's kind of a little bit different, you know? You ask for the applicant to go first, but the property owner is not the applicant, it's actually the council member. And we're talking about, first of all, a property zone R 10 with a PUD that allows neighborhood commercial. And as a part of the neighborhood commercial, trying to limit certain uses of retail, which my client opposes. We had the community meeting Tuesday night, which is at our request, and this commission's urging. As the council lady said, it was very well-attended, it was a very informative meeting. And in my communications to you today, two things were clear, if indeed the people in attendance at the meeting on Tuesday represented a clear will of the surrounding area. And that is this. And I think you heard it in some of the comments here today. One, don't ever develop that property, at least in the commercial sense, and my clients don't have any interest in residential development. Two, in the absence of developing that property, sell it to the neighboring golf course owner or indeed the community if they are willing to purchase it. My client has none of those interests. However, they, they have owned it for about a year, and there's no question that there's been bad blood that's developed between the neighborhood and the former owners. If, if there's any way we, some, any way or something we could do to rectify that, we certainly would, but we don't see that as a plausible option. However, you know, in the limited two minutes I got here in this yellow light and that red going off, it's extraordinary that...
You need to summarize, please.
That the property owners would be, have their rights and entitlements into the property taken away and not have any say in the matter. And I just ask you to disapprove the bill. And again, the substitute that was reflected on the screen is not the current substitute that's on track in with the bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Um, most of the people who came, okay, there we go.
Give us your name and address, please.
All right. First of all, my name is Rhonda Eisenhower. I am a brand-new resident of Nashboro Woods. My, my address is 244-... My address is 2440 Ravine Drive. And just to give you a little background on my family, I'm 41 years old. My husband's 43. We have children 23, 13, and 14. My husband works in Franklin. I have a degree in forensic anthropology, and my children are musicians. We moved to Nashville for that purpose and to, you know, to move to a nice area. We moved here a year and a half ago to another part of town. We looked long and hard to find a nice neighborhood to raise our kids in. We noticed that there's a lot of older people in our neighborhood. We know that eventually, homes turn over and stuff. One of the biggest things that attracted us to Nashboro Woods was that particular area because there was still some open space that my kids could ride their bikes. They could run around. You know, my kids like to do archery. They could take their bows and arrows and their little targets down, you know, and they had room and they had a little space to breathe. And so it was a huge attraction for us when we first went to look at the house to see that there was still just a little bit of land that didn't have anything on it but grass and a lake and some ducks running around. That was very important to us because we come from a rural area. And I think, you know, for the future of the neighborhood and the future of the residents and for younger families that will eventually be moving to that area, you know, as houses start to turn over, as people age and go their own ways, you know, younger families, we like to see just a little bit of open space left for our kids to play. And so that's why I have to say, I'd just like to see it kept and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant's got two minutes for rebuttal.
Commission members, to just clarify some of what has been said by the new owner's attorney, and in regards to the statement about the property owner not being the applicant, I do want to reiterate that the periodic review legislation that was created by the Metro Council in 2007, created this process, which allows the council member to initiate the review as the applicant. That's very important. So I'm not doing something that is not a part of legislation that was created for council members to be able to do. Secondly, we all do prefer that there not be anything built on this property. We all prefer that it remain as it is. We all prefer that no commercial establishment goes there. However, we have negotiated in good faith with the former property owner whom we don't have bad blood with, we just had strong negotiations with. And these uses that have been listed were developed collaboratively. And I also want the record to reflect that the residents here from Nashboro are not in opposition, that they're here so that you can hear their voices loud and clear, that they would prefer this property to remain as is, which the property owner is not, the new property owner is not willing to do. And in closing, the... This property was considered for purchase by Metro Parks, as well as by Attorney David Wainett to put a golf course driving range on, and it was sold for $50,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I declare the public hearing closed. Greg?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a few questions following up with some of the testimony. I guess the first would be the one-story height restriction. Can you just explain that policy and why that's in there?
Well, as you can see, this was the site plan that was approved. It wasn't, it was not a very detailed site plan from the...
Is that on a napkin?
Yeah. It was not a detailed site plan, but basically, what we did was we scaled that off to determine how many square feet were in this building, and that comes out to a one-story building. And so, the original PUD was approved, we believe, for a one-story building. And adding a condition that says that it has to be a one-story building, to us, was not different than what the plan was originally approved for. So that's why we were recommending that that be made more clear as part of that condition.
And that there was testimony that that matches the... I hadn't been out there in a little while, so that matches... I didn't know if there was any new development, but that matches the surrounding developments?
Well, I mean, there's residential development around this. So there's more than one story residential surrounding it, but there's no other commercial immediately around this. And so that's... But since this one parcel was approved as a commercial component of the overall residential PUD, the one-story requirement that's being made part of this council bill, this current proposal, we believe is not inconsistent with the original concept that was approved by council in 1983.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my other question is, there was, I do remember this periodic review a little bit when I was a councilperson. I think I might need a refresher on, is there a timeframe on this periodic review, or is it automatically goes into effect after a five-year... I think I remember five-year increments or...
The periodic review for PUDs is six years. So if there's an undeveloped portion, or if the entire PUD or a portion of the PUD is still undeveloped six years after the council approves the plan, then there's a, the zoning code says that the council member or the planning commission or the property owner of that, of the PUD can request a periodic review to determine whether that PUD plan is still consistent with the community plan policy six years later. So this one's been well past six years. And when this periodic review was done several years ago, it was recommended by the commission to keep the commercial component of this PUD in place as a neighborhood-scale commercial PUD that would serve this community. So that's what it was approved for, was small-scale...
So when did we have the periodic review on this particular property?
Um, yeah, I don't have the exact date. It was several years ago, but it was two or three years ago, I believe. I think it was 2012, but I don't know the exact date.
Okay. I'm gonna, I would like to listen to what my other commissioners have to say on this issue, and if I can reserve any other questions.
Stuart?
Well, I'm interested in a couple of things. We, as a commission, have long favored mixed use in areas like this that are... I think we have a strong interest in residential and commercial being close together. So I'm not philosophically opposed to this. It's been part of this PUD forever. And the property owners do deserve some consideration on that. But that's not what we're being asked to do. We're not being asked to keep it residential. And I don't think the neighbors are really on that, from what I'm hearing. But I'm wondering if the changes that we are suggesting in the staff report relative to specific retail uses, is that... We have also, over the years, since this PUD was established many years ago, had much more refined thinking about different kinds of commercial uses. So I guess I'm thinking that what the staff must be recommending is that these residential, these commercial uses that remain after we take out some of those that don't seem too compatible to the residential that's right next to it, that that's kind of part of the evolution of what we've done for some time. We've been a little more specific as to what kind of commercial fits well right up against residential. Is that the way, is that the way the staff looks at it?
Yeah, and I think the way we're looking at this is that the original PUD was sort of vague in terms of the types of commercial uses. And this bill clarifies that it will only allow for neighborhood-scale, neighborhood-type uses, things that are compatible with the neighborhood, such as retail, restaurant, office, and not the heavier commercial uses that were in this list or things that you would not want to see in the middle of the neighborhood, such as the adult entertainment pawn shop, those types of things. And so, we feel like this is sort of clarifying the uses that will be permitted and that were always intended, since it was approved with neighborhood. There was language in the original PUD that talked about neighborhood commercial uses.
All right. The second issue is, the property owners believe they have a right to two-story units. It's two-story commercial here. And you're thinking that it's one-story from your analysis?
There's, like I said, this is not a real detailed, this part of the PUD plan is not very detailed. But when we looked at the square footage that was approved for this parcel and sort of scaled off that building, it comes out to the 23,000 square feet. So it would have to be a one-story building, the way it was approved, based on the scaling off this on the plan.
And the square footage?
Right.
All right. That's all I have right now.
Leon?
Yes, I have a question for the property owner's attorney. Looking at the staff recommendations to the prohibited uses, what uses would you want taken off that list?
Well, I think as the advisor to them, when you start picking and choosing uses, you start getting into discriminatory impact. And, you know, Conley Brown versus Metro came out of court of appeals just recently, and it talks about that. So, you know, when you buy a piece of property, you buy it with certain rights and entitlements to it. And to, you know, the property's been vacant since they bought it, which is in May of 2013. Matter of fact, the property's been vacant for 30 years. So I think this is a solution looking for a problem. But when you, in case they don't develop it, you know, they would like to remarket the property, as anyone would. And there's no sense in shooting themselves in the foot by taking away some of the entitlements that they captured when they purchased the property.
So even with the staff recommendations accepted, you would not want any of those prohibited uses listed?
No, ma'am.
And I had a question, too. You said the substitute bills do not mirror each other?
The, I'm looking at what, I just saw flash on the screen very quickly, and I'm looking at a document entitled Amendment Number One that I got as a public records request out of the planning staff. And if you look at some of these words on this amendment, they're incoherent at best and unclear at worst. And like, Item 7, "Buildings shall be constructed of quality materials." No one knows what that means. Talks about an Item 3, crosswalks, you know, compelling crosswalks. You know, that's a charter requirement of the Public Works Department, shouldn't be on the property owner. Where parking, where possible parking should be located behind or adjacent to the buildings. I think, again, that's kind of a public works decision, not something that should be, could, should run with the land.
And you're looking at the, you're looking at the version with the staff recommendations included?
I can't say for sure, Commissioner. I got this amendment sent to me from Mr. Swager in the planning staff. And then when I see the screen that was flashing, that was substantively different than what I have.
Okay. Can we, can we make sure that he's looking at...
And another point to that, you know, safety, sidewalks and crosswalks should be provided at the intersection of Nashboro Woods and Flintlock Court to encourage pedestrian access and safety, preferably with no traffic signal at this location. You know, again, that's a public works, traffic, parking, engineering issue.
Just for the commission, the planning commission's recommendation stands on its own, and the council may or may not adopt those as part of the amendment. So it's, you know, it's really how the bill's written could be changed or anything. The commission's recommendation will go down as what's either a recommendation of approval or denial, depending on how the amendment is ultimately crafted.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Phil?
Well, I'm glad we deferred it for one session. I think that the presentation today is much improved over what it was, so I would be in favor of it.
Walter?
No comments at this time.
Is there a motion?
We adopt.
We adopt staff recommendation.
Motion second to adopt. Staff recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Carrie, we're ready for Items 4, 5, and 6.
No, I think we're going to present each one individually, right? Yeah, they'll be presented and voted on individually. Right.
My name's Carrie Logan, and this is Item 4, a text amendment for detached accessory dwelling units. This is a continued conversation from our changes to the subdivision regulations that we passed a few months ago. And the subdivision regulations looked at the shape of the lots and comparing them and having them be comparable to surrounding lots. And these text, the three text amendments actually addressed what can be built on those three lots. All three of these are county line changes, and the intent is to modify or to balance goals of accommodating additional growth in Nashville and to maintain existing neighborhoods by requiring more compatible infill development. And this specific text amendment has been modified since we presented a version to council and discussed with the commissioners. The text amendments have been posted on the web for quite some time, and there have been web forums posted with them. We've also received a variety of emails, phone calls, and meetings regarding the three text amendments. We did do a presentation to the Metro Council on March 31st as well. Currently, detached accessory dwelling units are only permitted in R zoning, where you also have a historic overlay or an urban design overlay with development standards for detached accessory dwelling units. This particular bill would allow detached accessory dwelling units in any area that is zoned R. Those are the areas that already allow two-family dwellings. And this was a change made after council member and committee feedback. Staff removed the section of this particular text amendment that addressed proposing detached accessory dwelling units within single-family residential districts. And I want to be clear to the commission and to the audience that that is not part of this text amendment. It would allow any lot with an alley or over 15,000 square feet to add a detached accessory dwelling unit. And it modifies the size limitation slightly for the footprint of the detached accessory dwelling unit, but keeps the living area the same as the current code at 700 square feet. And here are some examples. Oh, are the examples have gone? I'm sorry. The examples, what we're talking about here are sort of the mother-in-law suites that are behind units and are subordinate to the primary structures, the kind of units you would see over a garage, that many have either as rentals, which you could do in this R district, and staff is recommending approval.
Can you put those back up, what the changes were?
Sure. There are a number of slides that we can go through if you'd like, but the text is...
The next one, you've got some of it that's marked out.
Mm-hmm.
Want to make sure all the commissioners had a chance to look at that. Any questions? Been the commissioners on that, or we move ahead with it? So that's into your presentation for full, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So item is open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in support, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners of the Times. Avenue in East Nashville. My neighborhood is partly in and partly out of a conservation zoning overlay, and y'all just approved an expansion of our conservation zoning overlay, and thank you for that. One of the advantages that our neighbors who are in the conservation zoning overlay areas have enjoyed is the ability to do a detached accessory dwelling unit. Our zoning is R6. And one of the perks that some of our neighbors are enjoying about that is, in particular, is that with families having children who are staying in the home a little bit later than they may have in the past, that that provides an option for them. Some are using it as a guest home when they have guests that are over. And also, some are enjoying that as a potential to have rental income. enjoying that as a potential to have rental income on their property. We haven't, even, even in our areas that have that access, it's not like every property has those. It's still a little bit cost prohibitive for most people to build those, so it's not that every lot has them. But those who do have them, in our experience, have been no more unreasonable amount than, about renting them out than the regular house landlords who rent out their houses to sometimes three or four or five or six people. So we haven't noticed any difference there. Primarily, the neighbors in Eastwood have expressed to me that they feel that the detached accessories are a benefit to them, and I think that it's a good idea to expand that a little bit beyond historic districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm Charlotte Cooper, 3409 Tremble Road, District 34. I oppose this text amendment as it is currently written. If you read the staff analysis, and as Ms. Logan said, it states the proposed changes only apply to R-zone districts, but in the actual text message, it does not specify that. In fact, in the definition of accessory dwelling detached, it states on any lot over 15,000 square feet. I believe this opens loopholes with potential unintended consequences, and we have certainly seen unintended consequences in the past. The proposed Southernland skyscraper is a prime example. When the Green Hills UDO was created, the residents understood it was to protect green hills and limit the height of buildings. However, an amendment which was added a year later after the UDO was approved has apparently been interpreted by the planning department to the developer's benefit, thus allowing administrative approval for a 17-floor building. If this stands, it is certainly considered by most to be a loophole with an unintended consequence, one that is causing residents much frustration, dissatisfaction, and disappointment with the planning department and its interpretation. More detailed and specific language could and should have prevented this absurdity. We must make sure this does not happen with this detached accessory dwelling text amendment. The language is simply too vague. Until the language is more detailed and specific to include this only applies to R-zone properties, I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Margot Chambers, and I live in Nashville, and I'd like you to withdraw this amendment or vote it unapproved. If you're not able to do that, I'd like you to add wording to this change which specifies that the developer must be in compliance with the following prior to any permits being pulled. I would like you to comply with Historic Preservation Act, Section 106, Tennessee State Historic Commission approvals, U.S. DOT Section 4F approval, compliance, and the approval of the TDOC commissioner to make sure that you're not planning auto gridlock. Otherwise, if you don't make any changes to this, you need to, you're not leaving any development space for cars, and you should add language to prohibit the dwellings from having automobiles. If you're not going to change anything else, at least prohibit the automobiles so you don't screw up the rest of the city. This is to ensure the density you're permitting in Nashville with these amendments follow all regulations and will not plan auto gridlock. I'd also like you to update the Other Business section of your agenda to include contract costs, contract numbers, and contract deliverables whenever the Planning Commission votes to approve something on behalf of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Lester Smith. I live at 3618 Tremble Road in Green Hills. I urge you to withdraw or to not approve. I wish the planning staff would withdraw the proposed amendments. It appears to be an easy way to bypass recently approved subdivision infill regulations and to allow small rental properties to increase the density in existing neighborhoods. I do hope that you will raise the question about what is driving the need for these text amendments? Is it only to increase density? Is there a demand from families for this type of structure? Finally, I ask you to consider how this will be enforced once it, the structure is built. If grandfather's going to live in it at first, when grandfather dies and there's no other family member to occupy this dwelling, the fam, the owner may well decide, let's get some rental income out of it. Desirable neighborhood, small unit at a reasonable cost. Is Metro going to develop a corps of enforcers that investigate the validity of family members living there, and when will they do that? Or can it only be challenged if Metro goes to court? I think these are dangerous amendments, and I urge you not to approve them and not to recommend them to council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Bear, 323 Forest Park. I also work with some citizens groups at Sunnyside, and this has brought, brought to my attention as kind of an entry-level way of getting around the idea they're mad enough that people taking duplexes and then turning them into half a million dollar aside or a million-dollar aside gigantic houses. And this is just a way to, instead of having a small attachment wall or something, to get them, get them more of a separation and maybe make it more palatable, I guess, make it feel more palatable. But I have seen these being built around East Nashville and near, in like Green Hills, above Green Hills area there, and they just, they, they take, they suck the entire backyard up. They will take everything, and they'll build a gigantic house, and you're thinking that you've got a lot of square footage here, but the way some of the Nashville lots are, it doesn't end up being looking like that. It's a 700-square-foot, it's a large, three-story garage or three-car garage with 700 feet on top of it. It really sucks up the entire yard. It's like, you know, it really does end up taking up the whole property. And I don't think this, you know, I know that you want to infill every spot, but I think you ought to start listening to some of the people that have some adjustments and want to have backyards in the city.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? You want to speak, please line up behind each other at the microphone.
I'm Glenn Chandler, and I live at 1413 Bank Alpine, which is out there in Eaglewood. And I most likely represent the face of a lot of other people out there that are in a similar situation to what I am. I live in my grandmother's house. It's just a small house out there, but I try to take care of it, keep it up. Next door to this house is a great big white house that they didn't know anything else to do, and they turned it into eight sleeping rooms, and now they're thinking about putting family upstairs and the family downstairs. So most likely, it's R-rate, R-zone instead of being, everything else in the neighborhood is, I'm sure is RS because they're, they're all single-family dwellings. This one is not, and it's been an eyesore and a cancer on the neighborhood for years out there. It has a garage out there. It's right up against the, the property line, and it's within 20 feet of my bedroom. There's no air conditioning in mine, so normally I keep the back window open all through the warm months of the year. You let them put someone in there, it's going to be unbearable, unbearable for my, it's going to ruin the value of my property. I won't be able to sell it, and I won't be able to live in it. And I'm sure that there are other people out there that are in a similar situation. Think about those people and give those people a break.
Thank you.
I'm Beth O'Shea. I live at 4305 Wallace Lane. I almost forgot. I want to, and as your resident retired teacher, again, I want to urge you to be specific with language because the loopholes that loose language may permit can cause, as was mentioned earlier, unintended consequences, and we do not want to see any of those happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernard Pickney, 4604 Dakota Avenue. My main concern is that the body of the amendment doesn't contain any reference to RS zoning, and it seems like to me since, is what I remember, the original version applied accessory dwellings to all RS and R districts, and then it went through a couple of different variations before it came down to the one that came out on April 4th. I'd just like to see something in that amendment that references, that it not apply to RS districts. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm John Summers, 5000 Wyoming Avenue, here on behalf of the Historic Southern Park Neighborhood Association, former council member and also member of this commission. I mean, we're here because of the mistake this commission made along with the Code's Department, along with the council in 1997, '98, Councilman Clifton, when we updated our code and inadvertently took out the common interior wall for duplexes. So that's how we got the umbilical cords, which nobody likes, and Councilman Brierley tried to clean that up to maybe have some separated units, and now we've got these large skinny houses, everybody calls them. I mean, I think if you asked a majority of residents in the city that liked to go back to what the code was, what everybody understood it to be, which was that we had duplexes of one structures. Now, I don't know that you're going to get there today, but in terms of trying to clear up some of the problems that are there, I think I want to reiterate what some of the folks have said. You know, my position primarily today is based upon the fact that you don't have clear language clarifying that it's not RS. You know, you refer to a table, it's over here and all that. You really need to put that language in there so there's no misinterpretation. Secondly, you're doing this, some of this by restrictive covenants, you know, there needs to be some provision that Metro's going to enforce those, because if you don't, then you put the burden on the next-door homeowner to try to enforce those restricted covenants. I also would ask the commission to look at some of the language that was taken out of the original text. You know, I think a lot of what was taken out would do even more to protect adjacent properties, and this is what this is all about. You know, how also do you affect adjacent properties in the overall context within the neighborhood? And some of my comments basically apply to the next bill. I'm not sure if I'm going to come back up and speak on it again, but I appreciate your take.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a discussion, a preliminary meeting on these text amendments last week, and there were some questions about it then, and particularly the detached accessory dwelling units. As a result of that, I think we in the council agreed to go back to the drawing board and look at it so that we can try to figure out what is suitable for all parties concerned. So having said that, I won't make any more comments because that is still under review, and I know in the council, and Mrs. Logan is working on it, too. So I will have no further comments after that. Okay. Back to you.
Well, I would like some comments from Carrie about the various items that were raised, and let me just throw out a few of them here. And whether this bill covers these or whether we should add to it, I just want your opinion. One of the things was about the historic districts and so forth. I thought that that was covered, but there was a mention about concerns on that way.
Yeah, and any structure within a historic overlay certainly would have to meet the design guidelines for that historic overlay.
Do we need to add something?
No.
It's covered?
No, that's covered.
What about car gridlock? I was a little bit lost on that one.
A lot of these units are in areas that are more walkable, so you do see an increased amount of foot traffic, and that way, East Nashville, as I think we had one comment, is a big proponent of these types of units. There could be a slight increase, but they would have to accommodate parking onsite like you would for any number of units that you have onsite. And if I could just clarify, there's a separate section of the code with the land use table, and the land use table has where certain uses are permitted, whether they're permitted, permitted with conditions, special exception process, or an accessory use. Right now, in that table, detached accessory dwelling units are a PC use in R districts where duplexes are already allowed, in multifamily residential districts, and in office residential districts where the density is higher. In previous versions, there was a section of the proposed text that modified the land use table to add a PC into the RS column where single-family units are currently only allowed. That has been removed from the text amendment, and the reason why it's not addressed in the language that you see today is because it's not changing what's in the current code.
Okay. Next, there was a statement that said that this would bypass new infill regulation.
No, certainly not. This, the infill regulations talk about how you can divide property into a certain number of lots and how those lots have to compare to surrounding lots. These types of structures are the structures that you see. They have to be behind the property, the primary structure. They have to be smaller than the primary structure, both in height and in size, and there is a square footage limitation that on smaller lots basically equates to a two-car garage that could have a living space above it that's limited to 700 square feet. And on larger lots, it comes out to about a three-car garage that could have a 700-square-foot living space on top of it, but only in R-zoned districts.
Only, okay.
And it also does not allow the subdivision of lots?
That's correct. It does not allow the subdivision of lots and requires that one of the units be owned or be occupied by the property owner. So you can have a primary structure with an accessory dwelling unit, but one of those has to be occupied by the person who owns the property, and that's in the, the language of the code today.
Okay. This one, I was really glad that this was brought up, and that was, what if there's a change in the family situation? Somebody passes away, moves or whatever?
Right.
Or if there's a change of ownership?
And that was part of the RS discussion, the familial limitation. Right now, the code allows attached accessory dwelling units in RS districts, so you can build out your basement or an addition for your mother-in-law or aunt or uncle. And so when we proposed detached dwelling units in single-family districts, we proposed the same familial limitation so that it would all be one family. However, since that, since we're now only talking about R zoning districts where you can either do the detached accessory dwelling unit or a duplex, there's no, the familial limitation is not part of the discussion anymore.
Okay, and I know that this came out two or three times. Do we need to strengthen this any by specifically stating RS?
Well, it is in another section of the code. It's specifically only in R districts, RM districts, and office residential districts. That would have to be modified to add it into the RS districts, and that's why you don't see this language here because we're not proposing it in RS districts.
It wouldn't make it any stronger by, okay. That's the end of 20 questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leon?
No comments.
Start.
Well, I, I think we have for some time been balancing, at least in some parts of the county, an interest in absolutely necessary increased density for a lot of reasons, such as a lot more people wanting to live here and the environmental and other reasons why you don't want sprawl. And I don't think anyone on the commission has a problem with that goal. We've then been balancing that, particularly in Green Hills and other areas, with, with maybe unintended consequences. unintended consequences in terms of, particularly in terms of that goal along with what I consider to be unfortunate failures of our subdivision process. We have fixed that to some degree, but the, the, the problems, the, it's sort of a public relations issue as much as anything else. And I know we will continue to balance these two, and I'm trying to think about whether this, this is part of that balance. I, I, I live in an area that would be covered by this. It's, I live in our district. A lot of council districts I live in is RS and wouldn't be. But we do have a problem that hasn't really been addressed that I think this bill does address. And that is that in the entire 18th district, very few people ever have any hopes of their children living in that district. Because it's kind of nice that our property's gone up through no fault of our own, but nobody lives there unless they're pretty well off, even if they leave, they don't need a lot of space. And frankly, we, we need people of all ages and income groups and rentals, as well as homeowners living in neighborhoods. So I actually like the basic rationale behind this. I think you've answered my questions about the RS, but I do want to know, and I think you were wise to not include RS in this, in this. It's, that's a bridge too far right now, I believe, and maybe forever will be. What about the reference? Are we relying in this, in this amendment, text amendment, on restricted covenants in some way? Is that, how did that?
That's a sort of, that's an additional requirement. These are certainly part of the zoning code, and they would be enforced through environmental court.
What, how does, I just missed it, I guess. Where does restricted covenants come into the discussion?
There is a section that's currently in the code, and we've left it in the proposed changes, which is basically that you have to record the restrictive covenant so that future owners are aware of the limitations placed on the detached accessory dwelling units that would come up in any title search.
All right, I see. All right, that's, that's all I have right now.
Jeff?
No comments.
Greg?
Just a few questions. The first would be, I'm assuming that any one of these dwellings would have to meet existing setbacks?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So it couldn't be like up against the property line if a setback?
That's right. The only, there is a section that allows you to decrease the rear setback for any accessory structure, but that would include a garage of a similar size.
Okay. Well, and when I was a councilman, I remember getting a lot of questions about, you know, hey, can my, my, my mom live in a, you know, above the garage? We have a space above the garage where we want to build out? And the obvious, the questions that come up, well, and would this include, let me ask this, a couple of questions. So would it include, just say you built a bedroom above your garage without any electrical box or any electricity going to the dwelling or water service?
I believe that you can build out the area above your garage sort of as an extension of your current living space, like the extra bedroom or office or den or playroom, but you can't have a separate unit with a range and a kitchen.
And a full bathroom. Bathroom. And a full bathroom. That's what I thought. So thank you for answering that question. And, you know, I, I believe that it does provide an alternative housing option, and I do like the, the theory behind this. And when I was a councilman, you know, because it didn't exist, that type of, of housing stock in Creve Hall, and I'm speaking for Creve Hall, which actually I rezoned RS, so that option would not exist prior to that. But that's a whole nother thing that we could discuss, but I do think that these, this type of, of housing is important for the city as we, as we, as we grow.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Carrie.
This is item five, and this is a text amendment for two-family dwellings. Same process, we are, this is a continuation of our subdivision regulations conversation and all the infill bills, sort of, we looked at together. And we're balancing the same here, same goals here of accommodating additional growth and maintaining existing neighborhoods. The same amount of community outreach, they've been posted on the web since February 11th, and we've received numerous feedback, or numerous amounts of feedback from the web forum, emails, phone calls, and various meetings. And because of the current definition of two-family dwellings, duplexes in Nashville can either look like this, where they look attached, or like this, where they're attached by a connector that's required by the zoning code. And this bill would require two-family dwellings to either be attached with 80% starting at the front facade, like, as shown in the last picture, or completely detached and would eliminate the connector completely. And at the request of the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission would determine the manner of attachment in historic zoning districts, so they would determine whether attached or detached is appropriate in their overlays. And this bill would also limit the height of detached units to one and a half times the width of the structure. And here's an example of that. You can see here two detached units that are 25 feet wide, and they are limited to 37 and a half feet tall. Currently in the UZO, if you're building a single-family or two-family dwelling, you are limited to 45 feet plus a seven-foot foundation. So the idea here is to make the units proportional so that the width and the height are more proportional on the street and limit the height a little bit, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you. Item is open.
Just to highlight, this only applies to areas that allow duplexes now.
That's correct.
Item is open for the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in support? Please come forward.
Good afternoon again, councilors. My name's, commissioners, my name's Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada in East Nashville. Definitely, my neighborhood is one that got hit by umbilical cord duplexes, for sure. Thankfully, my neighborhood now, at least mostly, is in a conservation zoning overlay, so most of us don't have to worry about that particular phenomenon for a whole lot longer. But definitely, it's the case that a lot of the infill that's gone on lately in, in a lot of our R districts, particularly in our more desirable urban core neighborhoods, have totally been out of character with the surroundings that they're in. I can also tell you that even during my conversations with my own neighborhood, we have a lot of members of the architectural development community, and even they don't see a benefit to those structures. So I'm definitely in favor of the, the proposal, certainly for the attached duplexes. I think that for the detached duplexes, personally, I don't think there should be detached duplexes anywhere. I think that a duplex by definition is attached, but I do think that this at least starts to mitigate some of the damage of those. So I offer my support, at least on this as a first step measure, that maybe we can revisit later for the detached version, but I urge approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Michael Kinner. I live at 2505 Vox. I'm a developer that's built a lot of attached duplexes here in Nashville, and I'm also a member of ULI. I'm a young leader in ULI, and I travel all over the country. And a lot of people say a lot of great things about Nashville. And then one of the biggest questions that I get is, what's up with that little connector that you guys do in between your houses? And I, the only answer that I can give to them is, we've been trying to get rid of it for a couple of years, or at least I've been trying to get rid of it since I moved down here from Seattle. And so I think getting rid of this thing and capping some of your height scale and some of your massing will solve a lot of issues that the planning commission's running up against. So I would just like to speak out in favor of this. And also, there's another thing that, that comes into play here that most people might not realize, is that these things, attached versus detached, sells for a difference of 30% in sales price, which is also 30% difference in tax revenue, which means that if you allow for more detached structures as opposed to this attached umbilical cord, it will actually hopefully generate more tax revenue for Nashville as a whole, and will also give more contextual aspects that the neighborhoods have been fighting for as far as height and width. So I'd just like to ask you to support this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is John Brittle. I'm a Realtor at Village Real Estate. I represent not only builders and developers, but mostly homeowners and home sellers who buy and sell these things. And I would like to say that we have supported, like Mr. Kinner, for years, the removal of this umbilical. If, if we don't have to have it, it, it made a great difference in the streetscapes and how these things look outside the UZO, and we need to remove this connector. So I would recommend, I would, I would beg you to go along with the staff proposal. I did have a question for staff, and in discussing R and RS zoning, there are a number of opportunities where it's an existing legal duplex in an RS zoning, and these are currently being built in that situation. And so I believe there may be, we need some language. It's legal. I'm going to go along with Carrie. I feel like if it says R or RS and the language doesn't, isn't clear, then when we go to codes to get a permit and we say this is a legal duplex, and they say, okay, but you're not in RS, so you can't be detached, or you're not in R, so you can't be detached, you have to keep the umbilical. I'd just like to be clear that if we get rid of it, we'll get rid of it completely. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robyn Ziegler. I'm the Historic Zoning Administrator, and I'd like to thank the planning staff for including us in drafting this language. The current draft will allow the Historic Zoning Commission to address this issue, whether attachments should happen or not and how, on a case-by-case basis, as they do all other design issues. I know this is more than what you're really looking at today, but just for your own information, the majority of the time, what best meets our design guidelines is one building, and that will continue to be the case. But we recognize that there are some anomalies, some lots, where two detached dwellings would really make better sense for the neighborhood. So the commission would like that opportunity to, to address that, which this draft language allows them to do. We had a charrette on Monday. We got some great input from the neighborhood and from developers and architects and Realtors on how to address this, so we're doing some good research, and so we'll be ready to, to run with this if it does pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in support? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? If you'd line up behind each other to microphone, appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm Charlotte Cooper, 3409 Tremble Road, District 34. Not everything in this text amendment is bad. I agree with that. However, I am opposed for several reasons. And the first being that just because these have been posted on the website since February, and I'm talking about all of these text amendments, it cannot and it should not be a substitute for the public hearing or for public meetings. Based on my experience, sending in comments and our questions does not result, does not always result in complete answers, and sometimes not even remotely connected answers by the planning staff. I have been doing research on the website for years, and sometimes I find it difficult to find the information I'm looking for. And I think it's irresponsible to expect the public to monitor the planning website for major changes. My second reason is this change, if you build two detached houses, could have a negative impact on the character of existing neighborhoods by reducing the distance between the detached two-family units from 10 feet to just six feet. Many of these zone neighborhoods contain one single-family house on the property, and once two houses are built with only six feet between them, it starts to have a different look, one similar to an area with townhomes rather than individual family homes. And my final reason is the planning department is currently conducting the Nashville Next process, where many community meetings are being held. So why not use the Nashville Next opportunity to discuss these, not only this issue, but all the issues, rather than pushing this through in such a rushed way? So I am going to ask you to vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Barrett, 323 Forest Park. I, yeah, there's some good things in this, things that you're putting in here to, some good candy you're putting in here to sweeten this deal, but quite honestly, I think if you want to have separate houses, you need to have separate lots and not putting them, and not pretending that the lot is something that it, it isn't. I really think that when you have duplexes and you have shared space, there has to be some agreement of sharing. And if duplexes should, if they're in a community where there's other houses, you have duplexes, there should be a sense that this is one, that this could be one house or one entity, not two separate things thrown on a lot because it makes more money for some, somebody at the beginning of the process. I mean, people have to live in a neighborhood, they need to be in a situation for they share these things. If you, if you have to have an ugly-looking piece of something or other in between that, that's not right. But this is not the way to, to go about it, to get, what you really want, it looks like what you really want to do is be able to put more houses and then separate, then you'll separate those houses and tear them down. And I really think that you really need to find a better process out of this and actually address the situation. If you don't want to build on a lot and have an umbilical cord, or you don't want the houses to be next to each other in a unit, then you're going to have to go through some of the process of doing it. You don't want to have houses that, where you don't really have a backyard, you don't really have the things that you have by having a single-family house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Margot Chambers, and I live in Nashville, and I'd like you to-
Give us your address, please.
3803 Princeton Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd like you to withdraw or vote this down. If you're unable to do that, I'd like to correct the planning department's decision to reduce the space a developer must plan for automobiles. Please add the following language to this item. The developer must be in compliance with the following before any permits are pulled. Comply with the Historic Preservation Act, Section 106. Specifically, well, just in general, but I'm addressing the character guidelines and funding guidelines. Your planner's advice was wrong on the last item. Get approval of the Tennessee State Historic Commission. I'd like you to comply with the US DOT Section 4F and get approval of the TDOC Commissioner. These are all things to ensure the density you are permitting follow all regulations and that your decision today does not plan auto gridlock, because this will create auto gridlock, which reduces tax revenue. The explanation given on the last item for transit, it also applies here, and I'd like to clarify, your planning code has the density and transit not addressed together. Like US DOT Section 4F and the TDOC Commissioner laws for road capacity and highway congested, congestion are not found in your tax code. However, the state and the city still have to comply with that. Unless you add language here for addressing federal regulations on road capacity, you plan auto gridlock, frustrate citizens, lower tax revenue, and cause the city and state to lose federal transportation funds because air quality is going to go up, and that automatically cancels it out. These create lawsuits. This is irresponsible city planning. Please add the language addressing this. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Start it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, John Summers, 5000 Wyoming Avenue. My position is maybe neutral on this because I think there are some provisions that are beneficial. I do agree that nobody likes the umbilical cords and you're good to get rid of them. I disagree, again, that everybody, you know, that how much of the two units, unless you maybe even put greater restrictions than you have in terms of the size and the build-out, because what we're getting is we're getting lots that are just covered out there in terms of housing, square footage. And let me say this, this is hurting affordable housing. This is not helping affordable housing. I defy anybody to show me one house in the inner city to where we've actually divided affordable housing as a result of the infill construction we're getting. We're running people out of my neighborhood in Sylvan Park. I literally know people that have moved out of this county because of these being built next door to them. So, you know, we talk a lot about how we're a great city, we're attracting folks, but we're also running people out at the same time. You don't hear about those, but, but I've had some good neighbors leave. And so if you think we're doing anything about affordable housing, that's a mistake here. Don't, don't promote that because it's not, it's not true. The other thing is, is that I have some concern from the Historic Commission. There were several of us there at the charrette that were homeowners. It was really developers that were in favor of this. I really hope that the, and I guess, I don't know if you're going to address this, but I hope that the Historic Zoning Commission, I mean, I don't think these are compatible. I think there's very few places, and most all the homeowners felt the same way, there were very few places. So I'm hoping we're going to deal with this on a guideline by guideline. So I'm hoping we're going to deal with this on a guideline-by-guideline basis because an overall policy, you know, I don't think just fits with our historic zoning. But, thank you, but I think we need to be realistic in terms of what we're doing. We're driving up the cost of housing with this.
Beth O'Shea, 4305 Wallace Lane. Once again, I want to speak the voice of the children. I want you to think about kids playing on sidewalks, if there happened to be sidewalks, or in streets where cars are parked on streets. It is incredibly difficult in many neighborhoods now where density is tight to see the children. And I have large concerns. I've lived here in Nashville 62 years. I've lived on streets. I have taught in schools where children have been hit by cars because you cannot see them when the cars are parked on the streets. So I think it is incredibly important to pay attention to the safety rules that go along with whatever all of this is about.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? I declare the public hearing closed. Greg?
Starting with me a lot today, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I do want to make a couple of points just to, and one is about the density. We've, as a commission, and I really appreciate, number one, I appreciate the planning staff for working so hard on this, and then also I appreciate the planning staff for setting up the educational sessions. I've learned a lot from a lot of folks and planning professionals from around the country, setting up webinars and, you know, part of being a commissioner is the continuing education that we have to take. And, you know, the thing about density, and I think Commissioner Gee has always really been pushing this, and is that about density is that it saves metro government a lot of money the more dense that you build. And I know some folks don't like that density, but it's part of, in some areas in Nashville, it's part of that vibrant part of the city. People want to live in dense places sometimes. And so it's not, density is not a bad word, and I want to point that out. And for this particular issue, it's been ongoing for a long time, and I took pause when I heard Councilman Summers say Councilman Clifton was the reason for this. But I do appreciate the staff working hard on this, and from the most part, when Councilman Summers is neutral on an issue, it must be good. I say that jokingly, but I do think that a lot of thought has gone into this. And, you know, it's solved a problem that we all don't like, which is that umbilical cord. And I think that, including the Historical Commission, thank you for doing that. I think that was very smart, and some people may not like that, but I think that's a good thing. And so I'm, I would like to hear the other commissioners, but at this point, I'm going to support the text change.
Jeff?
One quick question, Carrie. This amendment only applies to duplex current zoning, correct?
That's correct. It just changes the definition of what a two-family dwelling is. So anywhere that you can currently do a duplex, either attached, attached, as you see on your screen, or detached, in some cases right now, you can do them outside of the UZO or on non-conforming lots. This cleans up the definition, and it does not change where you can do a duplex, and it does not increase the density of those areas.
Thank you, Senator.
I will say, though, that it will prohibit, you could not construct this under this definition.
That's correct.
One question, Carrie. Tell me this is not built in Nashville. It is? Stuart?
I'd like to thank Councilman Summers seriously because he's responsible for our historic neighborhoods, frankly. They would be gone right now without his dedication over many years. And I'd also like to thank him because it go, we go for months in this room without anyone mentioning the term affordable housing, and we cannot continue to ignore that. I'm not sure I agree with his conclusion on whether this helps or hurts. I don't think it hurts. I think it might help, but it could easily be oversold as a major help. But we got to wrestle with that. So even though his memory is very faulty about my misdeeds in the late 90s, I do want to thank him and all the other pioneers who have, who have really maintained our urban housing stock. And a lot of counties haven't done that, a lot of cities haven't done that. I understand the skepticism from some folks. I think it's interesting that people from our, from duplex districts are not here, and they have been fully informed about this, is my impression, and I am in support of the proposal.
Maria?
I just wanted to follow up on one of the comments made about the notice to the citizens. Can you just talk a little bit about how these amendments were notified to the public?
Sure. We did post versions online, and we also distributed it in our Development Dispatch, which goes out, I believe, every week or every other week. And we distributed that three times as we revised drafts and updated them with community feedback. So every time we posted new drafts on the web, we labeled them as updated, and we sent out follow-ups in Development Dispatch and then continued to give feedback on the revised drafts.
And how long has that process taken?
Since February.
Thank you.
I would say the Development Dispatch also goes to all of the neighborhood groups that we have on record, so each of the neighborhood groups also receives that information.
No question. Walter?
Thank you. I just want to come up with one clarification because we're looking at modifying the definition. Standing there for clarification, when we talk about modifying it, we're talking about going back to the traditional duplexes as we know it, where you have one building and two doors? Or do you talk about going to two separate buildings side by side and doing away with the connector?
It's both.
Which one are we looking at?
It's both. So in the current code, the code actually requires you to build this connector in the middle and calls that attached. This is the more traditional form of an attached duplex, where there's a solid wall and complete attachment of the two units. And so under this definition, you could build what you see here on the screen and a more traditional attached dwelling, or two completely detached units, like you see in the rendering here. And there would be, you would not be allowed to build the connector any longer.
Thank you. And having said that, I move for approval for the modification and definition of two-family dwellings. Is that appropriate?
I'm sorry, say it again, Walter.
I move for approval to modify the definition and standards of two-family dwellings.
Just a second. Just checking.
I just want to let you know I'm going to recuse myself from this call because I came in late.
Came in late, okay. Thank you. Was there a second to that?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five is now going to approve right in six, Carrie.
Yes. This is item six. This is a contextual overlay district. This is a continued conversation from the subdivision regulations and part of the conversation with all of the text amendments we've discussed this evening. And we're balancing the same goals of accommodating additional growth and maintaining existing neighborhoods. We have the same level of community outreach, posting on the web, sending in Development Dispatch, and posting a series of drafts that accommodated some feedback that we heard. And the planning department frequently receives requests for urban design overlays in residential districts, and the contextual overlay is a series of design standards and contextual measurements that will be adopted for a specific area in place of an urban design overlay. This is a new overlay district, and applications will be, neighborhoods would be required to go through the rezoning process like any other overlay. And this is intended for areas with consistent character that the neighborhood desires to maintain, and it's not appropriate for all areas, like the areas that we expect to evolve more over time. In all of these contextual measurements, the two lots on either side, on both sides, rather, for a total of four lots, the two lots on both sides of a lot proposed for development would take a series of averages and have contextual measurements applied to them. They would have the front setback applied at the average of the structures around them. They would have a limitation of 125% of the average of the height of the four structures around them, but limited to 35 feet. And they would have 150% of the average of the building coverage of the houses around them, limiting their building coverage. There are also a number of design standards that are incorporated. These are standards that we would include in urban design overlays. These are a light touch on design standards. They would require alley access where an improved alley exists, require garage doors to face the side or rear property line unless the garage is completely detached and recessed behind the primary structure, and it does not allow vehicular parking in the front setback. So you could park in the driveway, but you can't have the 90-degree parking pad in front of the unit. And this is how the contextual, an example of how the contextual overlay would be applied. You can see at the top left how the setback would be applied, the average of the setback, and the structures would sit back at that average. The building coverage, you can see in the middle and top right, how the building coverage is limited to 150% of the surrounding structures. And at the bottom right, you see the height limited at almost 33 feet. Again, in the UZO, the height is 45 feet on top of a seven-foot foundation, which is a total of 52 feet. And in this case, because of the surrounding structures, this would be limited to almost 33 feet. Staff recommends approval.
Carrie, is that building coverage, is that one story or is that a combination of?
It's, the building coverage would be the one-story, so you would get, the height limitation would limit you to two stories, the building coverage would limit you, but you'd get two stories in that volume.
Okay, thank you. Side of Ms. Zoff for public hearing. Anyone wish to speak in support? Good call, Paul.
Good afternoon, once again. Commissioners, my name is Brett Withers, 1113 Granada Avenue. My neighborhood is very fortunate that we have a historic context that's a basis for our conservation zoning overlay, but many of our neighborhoods in Nashville don't have quite as much of a context as that, and yet they want to kind of maintain what they have, the neighborhood feel that they bought into. And obviously, some of the infill that's been going on lately has really been counter to that, and they feel that it's changing that nature. I think that this is another good tool that your department has. It doesn't require as much input quite from your staff or from our neighbors to get really, really specific on designs, but I think it has some pretty good common sense objectives that seem to be pretty measurable, and that I think will meet a lot of objectives that neighbors are looking to achieve. Also, you know, just like any overlay, having information sessions is one thing, but actually talking your neighbors into agreeing to have these kind of limitations is kind of difficult. But quite frankly, that's a good democratic process that our council members have shown that they're able to do with our neighborhoods and our conservation overlays and urban design overlays. So I have no concerns about people getting noticed that this would be something that's proposed for their area, as long as our council members do a good job, as they have. So I recommend approval of this additional tool, and thank the commissioners for your assistance in helping our neighborhoods keep the character that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in support? Signifies anyone wish to speak in opposition?
John Riddle, 5474 Franklin Pike Circle, Brentwood, which is Davidson County, part of it. I have a question first, I guess for Carrie. 150% of the footprint, do both of those structures have to be within that 150% if they're two-struck, if that's a legal duplex lot in the center, does that mean that?
Yes, it's the percentage of the lot. And in this case, the building coverage is 2,680 square feet, which is roughly a 1,300 square foot building coverage for each of the units.
Thank you. I feel like the reason our entire city is not RS is because a lot of places live in neighborhoods that have a whole bunch of duplexes in them, and those are some of the neighborhoods where we're going to see growth. I believe that outside of historic districts, we don't need another limitation after changing from, the areas that we've gone from R to RS was to protect density for the neighborhoods, the existing neighborhoods. And we've learned to live with that. I believe that in the ones that aren't, in our zones and legal duplex areas, where that two-family structure can be built, I believe that, well, we have two concerns, the realtor community, and we've been talking about it all week. One of them is for future development and people who've already bought lots and bought rental properties to use later to build new structures that we need for Nashville. The sizes are now limited by a couple, by your side of the street. And we feel like what can be proposed, those proposed lots, if that's different for the guy across the street, we don't think that's fair, and we don't think that's the right way to do it. I'm also concerned for homeowners who've bought houses, and I have numerous homeowner clients who've bought houses that they either live in and are going to add on to in the future because they love the street, or they bought so that they could tear it down and build their dream home someday. And those people will lose their rights to do what they believe they can do now when their realtor told them, all you have to worry about is you can't build two houses here. You can do whatever you want, you're not in a historic district, you can build your house like you want it. I know people sitting out there with plans under their beds, and they can't build that house now if we're going to compare them. The context should be the whole neighborhood. We already have a tool for this, that's the urban design overlay, and I would request that you not carry this on because we can already do it with the UDO. Thank you.
We sit down, I've got a question. Are you understanding that if on the property there's 1,000 square foot footprint now, that all you'd be able to put on there is additional 500 square feet? The total of it would be 1,500 square feet of floor area?
I'm the understanding that if five in a row are 1,000, the subject's in the middle, and there are two on each side, and they're all 1,000 square feet, that middle person, and they're all conceivably legal duplex lots, that middle person, if they're first, they're limited to 1,500 square feet total, 750 on each side, and we're limiting the size of our infill development houses in areas that are to be developed because it just, and it's really going to hurt the neighborhoods where there are 600,000 square-foot homes that are now desirable urban locations for homeowners, and we're going to be stuck with a whole bunch of little bitty houses. It'll be nice that they won't be connected, and we need small houses, but we also have some places where we need some large ones. And I don't see anything in here about being able to change it based on the context. And if you're on a street that everything's five acres and you can't even see the house, the two houses on either side, you're still limited to your height and coverage by those. And I think the UDO does it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak? In opposition? There was, I believe. We're heading to support. We're going to close the public hearing. Declare the public hearing closed. Walter?
No comments at this time.
Philip?
No comment.
Vivian?
No comments.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that this offers an additional tool and that not every urban neighborhood should have to have a historic or conservation overlay to be protected from overly large McMansions on those lots. I believe that's what this does. I am further, you know, we don't ever like our elected officials until we know them, but I happen to believe our metro council does a reasonably good job with land use.
This has to go to council.
And I believe that this requires council action as a rezoning.
Yes, both the tool, the adoption of the tool requires council action, and then the application of the- application of the contextual overlay to any neighborhood would require a recommendation from the planning commission and a public hearing at Metro Council.
This tool has been used, or similar tools, this is not as complex or integrated as some across the country. There are cities that have adopted this uniformly across their whole communities or portions of their community. This one is pretty strategic in that it would require the council to identify a specific area and adopt it by ordinance, so it does not apply automatically. It would require a second hearing, as Carrie said.
No comments.
Derek?
No comments.
Good.
Just real quick, how many lots would it take to create this, like a district? I know that sometimes it, would it be two, or would it be 10, or would it be 100?
To create the district?
Yeah, to create this, the overlay. I mean, would it be just four houses in a row, or?
The way we've constructed the overlay is that it is through complete block faces. So we're asking that, you know, it could be one street that has complete block faces that wants to do this, like we had proposed with the Clayton Avenue UDO. Or it could certainly be a larger area like some of our conservation overlays.
Okay, thank you.
Motion? Move approval. Motion second for approval on your favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ready for item number seven. Carrie, I think you're going to be up here all night.
Okay. This is item number seven. This is a request for a SP. The current zoning for this property, this is a request to rezone from R20 to SPR to permit three detached residential dwelling units. And the staff has recommended approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. The current zoning is R20, which would permit two detached units on this property. And the policy is RLM, which permits two to four units per acre, and the proposed development is within that policy at 3.2 units per acre. Here's the plan. We chose three units, fronting a common open space that are accessed by a shared drive. There's a height limitation of three stories and 36 feet, and there are architectural standards as far as glazing materials and porch depth. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
With the applicant on this. Applicant be allowed 10 minutes and go back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brent Craig. I live at 5209 Nevada Avenue, and I am the potential owner and developer. Thank everyone for being here. Thank the staff, especially Carrie, for her patience in dealing with this. This has been on since, working with this one since, gosh, last fall, I believe, is when the first application was made. There have been many different ways to develop this property. We have an as-of-right, as the property sits, for two homes with no approvals, no changes. We could do two structures detached. We could also do a straight zone change to do an R8 or an R10. We have elected to do an R, excuse me, an SPR to help show the community and the neighborhood, give them more capacity of what's happening. With that, it comes a monetary investment. It requires planning and staff approval. It requires planning commission approval, council member input, two public hearings, three council votes, community meetings, and community input. Despite all those challenges, we have chose to do, leaving the homeowners in the different planning commissions, we believe this is the best way to do the infill development. It gives us the most input from the neighborhood. It also gives us the security of what we're going to develop, what the buildings will look like, what we're trying to give, the time and the effort that the SPR will take. With all of that, we're asking for one extra unit. For that extra unit, we get all the different approvals that we just talked about, all the addition of the architectural guidelines, fire safety improvement, new stringent stormwater regulations and requirements, and the certainty of what's going there, all of which we would not have if we were only to do the as-of-right two units. There's a lot of uncertainty with the growth of infill development. There have been some good and some bad. We are the purchaser, the applicant, developer, builder, seller. We have our hands on and in this project from the time we purchase the land to the time we sell the product. We had our first of many neighborhood meetings this Tuesday of this week. Most of those attendees are here. A lot of the great discussion and a few of the topics we need to address on the plans and the staff. Would the plans and the staffs and the neighbors include the green space, traffic, stormwater, sightline from the existing back porches of the neighbors, the precedent the SP might set for the neighborhood, resident and visitor parking into the new SP, the 30-foot extension of Hilldale Drive to occupy the Fire Marshal's requirement for a turnaround, garbage collection, the new HOA requirements, landscape buffers around the product, standards to the R75 zoning for each of the HPRs that would be created, and the three-story height restriction, which is controlled really by ridge height of the stories more so. I'm asking the vote yes tonight to give the opportunity to continue to proceed, to develop a plan, work with the neighbors and the councilperson, to develop this site in two, three units. Thank you.
Be allowed two minutes for rebuttal.
Is there any more of your, I think there's more of the team that's speaking, yes.
Please continue.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. I'm representing Mr. Craig, the developer. Hilldale Drive is currently a dead-end street, a stub street with no turnaround whatsoever. So we have a, presently, we have got a public improvement issue where you cannot physically turn around at the end of Hilldale Drive as you travel south without trespassing on somebody's property in order to turn around. So one of the things that this SP is going to do is to allow that public safety improvement to occur, which presently does not exist and would not exist without this SP. So you've got a dangerous terminus there now, which is going to be corrected by this development. The purpose of the SP here is really adding one additional home on a dead-end street. That's really what we're talking about, one home on a dead-end street. And again, that dead-end street's going to be improved to a full-fledged turnaround pursuant to the Fire Department. The site design elements that this SP is providing is particularly important. There's a park-like common area that's being introduced to the property along the frontage in front of the three units, rear-loaded garages. The two, all three of these homes are going to be detached, very consistent with the text amendment that you just passed, as opposed to a duplex that could be built on the property today. Minimum architectural review standards, and this is consistent with the land use policy and the community plan. So if you consider the merits of this SP over what could be presently built there by right under the existing zoning, these six or seven elements, including stormwater improvements that are going to be made to this property and to this area, you consider those factors and those merits, we believe that the staff recommendation is justified, and we ask that you support and endorse the staff recommendation, adopt that recommendation, and vote in favor of this SP. Thank you.
Thank you. Still left two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Could please line up the microphone behind each other. Please come forward.
Good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak on behalf of our neighborhood. My name is Laurel Button. I live at 3303 Wimbledon Road, and I have been adjacent to the Hilldale property for 27 years. I respectfully ask that you not approve this zoning change. One particular reason is for traffic concerns. We live in a very quiet neighborhood. Our street is not wide enough for two cars to pass without one getting to the side. And the same is true with Hilldale. And along with traffic, the plans from the developer do not show adequate space for parking for cars. For example, our house, we have five cars in our family, sometimes six. We have room for our cars. This plan does not have room for families with children, teenagers, who are going to be driving. My other concern is that this proposed development is not characteristic of the neighborhood, not in the size of the lot, not in the architectural design, plus the plans call for more home and concrete than green space. I also worry about my property value decreasing because of several tall homes, taller than the average home in our neighborhood, peering and hovering into our bedrooms, looking right into our bedrooms. This zoning change will help the developer. It will hurt our neighborhood. I strongly feel that way. And I do respectfully ask that you not pass this zoning change and allow for development that is in with the current zoning laws. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Charlie Hoaworth. I live at 3300 Wimbledon Road. There is a bit of an error in the application. It says it's 800 feet from Wimbledon Road. It's not. It's just more like 200 feet. So it's really relatively close. I live on the corner of Hilldale and Wimbledon. I think we've got enough people here to cover all the issues and concerns, and I'm going to direct my comments to one that's very important to me, being partly on Hilldale Road. And that's the status of Hilldale Road. It was described as a stub and so forth. Well, that has, there's been a long history there. There have been attempts to push this road through, which would connect it to a valuable place. That would destroy the neighborhood. We have fought this on several issues, several occasions over 10 years. We've gotten ordinances passed. We've gotten other assurances through the, through our council members. And my main concern is anything that we do here would perhaps negatively impact those safeguards we've got in place. This road cannot be connected. It should stop where it is or no farther, and our safeguards should be protected. Hilldale should not be extended, and that would be very detrimental to the community. Unintended consequences were mentioned earlier. This would be a very unintended consequence on something that we think is settled and should be settled, and may be put in play with this zoning change. So we would ask that you not pass this this time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, my name is Louis Button. I live at 3303 Wimbledon Road. My wife Laurel just spoke a moment ago. I too am opposed to the change in zoning. Again, echoing Charlie's comments about Hilldale. We've finally had for four councilmen, got it closed in 2007. The recommendation would be to extend Hilldale by 30 feet. I'm opposed to that. If you agree with me, then please, please vote against this. In addition, today, the developer sent us a little schematic just like this, showing where the road would go down and then attach to the driveways behind. But then he added four more houses down below, which are not for discussion tonight. But, long story short, is I feel like this is just going to start a snowball effect, and we'll have more houses in our neighborhood than the traffic on Wimbledon and Hilldale can accommodate. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Tanner. My husband Hugh and I live at 3301 Wimbledon Road. We purchased the home in August, thinking we were moving to a quaint, which it is more than quaint, Primrose Lane-type area. We now are faced with this proposal to change the zoning. We live on the corner of Hilldale and Wimbledon. Two cars cannot pass on those streets. It is so narrow. There is, to add an additional 15 cars right on, right now, would just be ludicrous. It is, it just, it will not, it will not do anything. And in addition to this, I request that you all please do not approve this. But we lived in another area of town, and the owners of the property, the owner currently, asked us, we looked, we lived in Belle Meade. He lived on the other side, in Forest Hills. There was similar type controversy going on. He requested that all of us come together, do the exact same thing. We abided, came together. There is now one home on the piece of property. We live in an area where the property on Wimbledon, the lots are quarter acre to acre plus. This, it just does not, it needs to stay that way. Please. I recommend, I request, I ask, I plead, I beg, let it stay like it is. It is our neighborhood. When he wanted it done in his neighborhood, he opposed it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Fran Lindley. I live at 3401 Wimbledon Road. I've been there for 10 years, and I represent myself and my sister, who lives adjacent to this property at 3604 Sycamore Lane. And we both oppose the current rezoning request. I've lived in Green Hills all my life. I know every biking route. I know all the shortcuts to the mall without the sidewalks. I know this neighborhood as well as I know the back of my own hand, and it is a fabulous place, and I'm not the least bit surprised that people want to move in there. I'm also not opposed to infill. What I'm opposed to is infill with lack of planning. And we have had that experience over and over and over again in our neighborhood and within our Wimbledon Road Association. We have had developers agree to deal with green space and stormwater and traffic, and they have done it verbally. They have even put it in very general terms in writing. And then they've come in and completely disregarded all of those agreements that we thought we had in place. And we've tried, as an association, all we know how, to say, "We understand that we're in a desirable place. We understand because we love it that it is going to continue to be popular, and that is great. Could we have a plan where we get together and we preserve the green space, and we preserve the space for the children to play and the low traffic?" We have owls, we have deer, we have hawks. There are gorgeous trees on this property. There's a claim that they're going to work to preserve those. If you put up three dwellings, there's no chance they will be reserved. So I respectfully submit that we could give an overarching plan to this that might make it plausible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Francois, and I'm at 3705 Wimbledon Road. My husband Bernard and I are about 10 houses down from Hilldale, where this development went back onto Wimbledon. We are a little street that runs one block, one block off of Woodmont from Bowling to Estes, and we're not new to the idea of infill. And we're doing what we've been asked to do, to talk to the developer, to work through our councilmen. But we know that if it's not reduced to riding, it doesn't count, and that we don't have any recourse. And so one of the things that I know you're going to hear about is that this plan calls for a 10-foot retaining wall, that we're going to level the lot, build a 10-foot retaining wall, and somehow maintain all of the trees, or maintain the significant trees. And our feeling is that we're being asked to go along with a zoning change, a change in the law as to what can be built on this property. We're being asked to agree so that the details can be worked out later. Our request as a neighborhood is that the details get worked out before we agree. I don't understand, and math is not my strong suit, I'll be the first to admit that, I don't understand how we can build a 10-foot wall and keep 20-foot trees. It doesn't make any sense to me. And the way that this land is oriented, as well as the adjacent lot, it is... And the way that this land is oriented, as well as the adjacent lot, it is a direct slope to an extremely flood-prone area, an area that fills with water every single time there's a heavy rain. You take those trees, you take that slope, and we've not been presented with a serious plan that addresses the stormwater issues. And until we see that, I don't see how we can go along with an SP. My request for you, we've tried to fix the subdivision zoning, is that you don't let the SP become a blank check to a developer, that we approve the change in zoning, and then we go back and work out the details, because all of us that live with infill live with the result of promises that aren't reduced to writing and aren't kept.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Andrea Campine. I live at 3703 Hilldale, which is just south of the second portion of this lot. And I'd like to echo some of the comments of our neighbors. In my understanding of the SP is it gives the opportunity for a developer and a community to come together to work out something that is mutually beneficial for the developer and the community. My concern here is that we've got a property that has been divided into two, but yet the SP and the proposal is for only one half of this property. I don't understand how we, as a community, can really understand what is being proposed and what will be developed on this overall lot if we're only considering one half of the property. My other concern, as has been mentioned, is the first opportunity we had to really get to understand what was being proposed was just two days ago. It really has not given us much opportunity to ask specific questions about stormwater, parking, traffic, trees, and, I mean, these are things, my property is just south of this incredibly sloped property. I live between this slope and the creek that was just mentioned. Every time it rains at our house, you see sheets of water coming down in front of our house. And I can only imagine what would happen if, instead of one house on this hill, there are seven houses. So if the SP is approved for three homes, the second portion of the lot is approved for four dwellings. And that really is my last point. We moved into our home 10 years ago. Across the street from us was one home on a property, and this Smith house is on the other side of us, one home on a piece of property. Today, across the street from us, where there was one house, there are now four. And what is being proposed under the current zoning on the other side of us, we would go from one house to seven. And so I'm asking that the commission keep some balance for our neighborhood. To go from two homes to 11 does not feel like good balance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Margot Chambers, 3803 Princeton Avenue, Nashville. Please withdraw this or vote it down. If you're unable to do that, to correct the Planning Department's decision to reduce the amount of space a developer must leave for automobiles, please add language to prohibit the owners to have automobiles due to the transit-oriented development planning preferences of the executive director, Mr. Bernhardt. Because this adds to air pollution, and especially if you're not going to add any language that specifies T.DOT needs to approve these things before you allow more density. If you won't prohibit this development from owning autos, then add language to this plan that says you have to comply, or the developers have to comply, with U.S. DOT Section 4F, and you have to get approval from a T.DOT commissioner. So that this density change, like all the other density changes you've approved since Midtown Upzone, do not halt the state transportation funding due to a rise in auto gridlock, highway congestion, and air pollution violations. You're failing to meaningfully engage the public with density changes you have embarked upon. If you doubt this, ask a Metro Council member how happy they think we are with what you're doing. I agree, density is not a bad word, but bad planning is a very bad phrase, and this is another example of very bad planning. All of these people here tonight, they're residents and voters, and if you won't act on what these citizens want tonight, you're going to affect the upcoming elections. Please vote no. I also have a short statement from Charlotte Cooper, who could not, she had to leave tonight. Can I read that?
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. I'm Charlotte Cooper, 3409 Trimble. I support my Hilldale neighbors in opposing this request to rezone from R-20 to SPR. Although you have allowed SP rezones in the past, not every request should be granted. This is a prime example of one that should not. It's located on a street of single-family homes with nice lots. Squeezing three houses on this lot will not fit the character of this neighborhood. To take this one property and attempt to rezone it, it appears to be nothing more than spot zoning regardless of using SP. After researching this street, I find no other lots with even two houses, much less three. Therefore, I ask you to deny this request by voting no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Diogarty. I live at 2808 Valleybrook Place, right next to the property. I've been living there for the past 35 years. The Planning Commission has just instituted a complete update and a revised set of rules in which they put in place to protect our properties through a series of overlays, zoning restrictions, future forward planning for slowly evolving change. All of this to protect and defend the rights of the majority of the people now living there. This SP is a powerful tool that supersedes all the existing criteria and must be used only sparingly with the consent of the affected neighbors. There is no consent of any affected neighbors. I'm the head of my little group down there in Blackberry Hills, which was all property that one time belonged to the Smith family, or part of it did. Not one person in that area is for this thing. You're right in the middle of RS 10, 10,000 square feet. To the west is RS 20. To the east is RS 40. And he comes along with 8,500-square-foot lots. They're not compatible with anything. I own a piece of property which has one foot less than necessary to split it into two properties. They won't allow that kind of a split. This property has no road frontage on it whatsoever. It's being grandfathered in. It should have a paved road in front of it. The fire turnaround that he talks about is a one-year turnaround. A real turnaround will be necessary as a cul-de-sac. They won't do the cul-de-sac because they don't want to spend the money, number one. Number two is, if they do the cul-de-sac, they don't have enough land left to even make the two lots they'd like to pretend they can split this into. It's 90,777 square feet. The cul-de-sac of 100-foot circle would take out enough of that that they're back to where they were before. It is zoned right now for R-20. It takes two homes. It's grandfathered in. Let them have the two homes, and that's it. If you pass this thing, it's a precedent for every property in the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My time's started. My name is Robert Brown. I live at 2820 Valleybrook Place, about 400 feet from this property. I oppose this rezoning for three reasons. First of all, the homes in this area are RS 40, RS 20, and RS 10. These lots are 8,500 square feet. They don't even come close to the minimum of the area, much less the average. Secondly, this is out of character with the neighborhood homes, which are typically 60 or 70 feet wide and 40 or 50 feet apart. These homes are 35 feet wide, I believe, and very close together. And finally, there's the issue of water runoff into Sugar Tree Creek. He's just trying to put too much building on this space, in my opinion, and I think the water runoff will be a serious problem. That's been a problem not just with the flood of 2011, but with other heavy rains as well. And finally, I want to say that I've been in touch by email and phone and in person with about 30 of my neighbors. I have not found one person who supports this. Now, this developer and the owner have a right to build on this land, certainly, but in character with the homes in Woodmont Estates and along Wimbledon and Hilldale and Valleybrook Place in this area. And thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Jim Harwell. I'm at 3713 Sycamore Lane. Thank you. Rigid presentation to the homeowners group shows a 10-foot-deep retainer wall on the north and west border. With a 12% average grade on the entire two acres, I assume that it is probable that the northern half of the property would be, say, a 10% grade. If the retainer wall is used for a cut-and-fill, which is only logical use, the amount of material extracted over that slope is approximately 100,000 cubic feet. This qualifies as a major disturbance of the topography and requires much more in impact engineering studies than what the builder has provided. The plan that rigid presented shows presumed coverage or disturbance of nearly 70% of the land, even when you don't consider cut-and-fill. This is the new construction alone when incorporating the driveways, new buildings, and his common area detention pond. So that means trees must be cleared that are less than four feet from all new constructed surfaces, and that results in every major tree in this once heavily treed area will be destroyed. So there are far too many unknowns and far too great an impact on the environmental issues and the flooding, as well as the proximity to the off-flooded Sugar Tree Creek, which lies just 400 feet down. So my family's lived on the property, in this neighborhood, for 40 years. Sycamore Lane is right next to Valleybrook Place, Hilldale, and the flooding there is tremendous. We've had major flood from Sugar Tree Creek. It's a, just, it's the flood plain. The house is built down near, have to be up very high, so this would cause major disturbance. And again, I just echo what everyone says, that we just believe that this should not pass. Thank you. But again, there's no neighbors in the area there for this. Everyone's against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? That's going to be a lot of two minutes rebuttal, and I have a question before we start your time. Can you tell me the width of these lots?
Mr. Chairman, of course, this is not a subdivision total. There are no lots being created here. The existing lot will remain the existing lot. Three homes are being constructed, horizontal property regime. If you want to know the width of the homes...
The width, you're going to put three homes on it. What's the width of that one lot you're going to put the three lots on?
Each house is 34 feet. 34 feet within the 50-foot horizontal property regime area.
Okay. Well, start your time now, two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I believe the concerns that you've just heard from neighbors is probably exactly why this SP should be approved, because this SP addresses those concerns, and I'll try to touch on those in the order that I heard them. Green space, as you can see on the very front of this property, Common Area A is essentially a park-like setting where all three of these properties will have a big front yard in this park-like environment along the terminus of Hilldale Drive. Stormwater, with this SP, the new stormwater requirements, as I understand it, are now going to kick in and be required to be complied with. If the property were developed without this SP, by right with a duplex structure, they would not have to comply with those new requirements. Hilldale is not going to be widened, and Hilldale is not going to be extended beyond its current terminus. Within the existing Hilldale right-of-way, which has not been canceled by Metro Council, it's simply going to be a turnaround, so that you can get a fire truck turning in and out of that terminus. The traffic increase concern, we're talking about one home. We're talking about an increase of traffic by one family. This SP protects the character and the cohesive design that's being proposed here will help property values in this area. The retaining wall, I understand there's going to be a retaining wall necessary whether the property is constructed as is, without rezoning it, or with the SP. So whether there's two homes or three homes, there's going to be a retaining wall of some sort. But the question then becomes, well, what kind of materials is the retaining wall going to be constructed of? Those are the kinds of issues, those are the kinds of details that the SP can address, and my client's prepared to do that. And this is a preliminary specific plan, not a final. We'd be coming back to this commission for final SP and final construction drawings. The density is well within the range of the RLM policy, and that concludes my comments and my rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare the panel became closed, and I'll call on Stewart.
I'd like to ask, you know, we do a lot of SPs. We talk about a lot of them. We vote for some and against some. Tell us about the level of specificity here. There's been a lot of discussion about wanting more detail before agreeing to what is clearly a change in zoning in a pretty settled area. Do we not, is this what we're supposed to have at this point?
Yes. A preliminary SP normally requires a conceptual plan, and detailed engineering plans will be required with the final site plan.
However, the commission can make certain requirements if you have issues that you want to have addressed that are substantive in terms of even the preliminary, if it's an issue the commission wants to address.
Well, I would want to address that, I think. I understand that we don't get a lot of rezonings where neighbors want to see more density, and our planning decision should not be based on counting votes like that. However, we have, and we've seen earlier today, that this commission is pretty much in favor of density in very specific ways where it's appropriate. I'm not convinced this is one of those areas, though. I'm not convinced that the folks who argue that this is, in some ways, too close to the kind of problems we had with subdivision and density caused by, density that really does change the character of an area. I'm just not sure if this is ready for prime time. I understand that it may not ever be liked by everyone. I'm not the person to list out what specific categories, what specifics we want, but this is, in fact, not really something that appeals to me at this point, and SP can be overused. I'd like to hear what everyone else says, but I'm not exactly sure we should be rejecting it today as much as saying, in this kind of very special area, which I think it is for a lot of reasons that we've just heard about, I just don't think we're ready to vote up or down on it. That's my thought.
Philip?
I just want to clarify. Right now, you can construct two homes on it?
Yes.
Under what zoning?
R-20, I believe, and they can be detached in this instance because they are outside of the UZO.
Okay, good. So it's one additional unit. Secondly, explain to me a little bit, on the right-hand side of this diagram, there's a little jog in there. Is that just a property line? And how does this all tie in with improving Hilldale access and turnaround and all that kind of thing? Just go into a little more detail on that, because I want to see what kind of value this really has got that it's giving to the community.
The jog in that property line that you see is a result of closing Hilldale Drive, which I believe happened between 2006, 2008. And so this portion of the property shown here and on the site plan here was deeded back to this property, and then the other portion of the right-of-way was deeded back to the adjacent owner.
Okay, now I understand that, okay. But go into a little more, any more detail about why this is going to be wonderful for the community as far as...
Well, the improvements shown here within Hilldale cannot connect Hilldale Drive to Valleybrook because of the closed right-of-way, but it does include a fire department turnaround.
So this means that anybody that comes in there can turn around?
Mm-hmm.
So it does have some value to it. Thank you.
Walter?
Yeah, Ms. Logan, we're going from an R-20, 20,000-square-foot lot to SPR. That's restricted, what's R for?
Residential.
Residential. What I was saying, I don't know whether you can answer this or not, what size houses would be allowed on that? I mean, is there restriction on the size of the house, or what's that all about?
We don't normally restrict the size of the house with an SP, but we do have bulk regulations, setbacks, and things that they would have to conform with. regulations, setbacks, and things that they would have to conform with.
They do, so there's no certain restriction on the size itself of the house, although you're going to add one more house over the two already zone for them?
Yes. But they would have to comply with side setbacks, rear setbacks, and height. So they have a certain volume created by the setbacks and the height that they can build within.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so after reviewing this and hearing the presentation and looking at some of the pictures, excuse me, that I think you showed a picture a little earlier of the community in and of itself, personally, I do believe that the proposed structure, or structures, plural, are out of character with the rest of the community, in my opinion. And although I am a firm supporter of infill development, something, putting three potential structures on here just causes me some concern in terms of the overall character of the community. So I'm not necessarily a fan of this at this moment.
Motion?
I've changed my mind about the need for more information, and when I think about it, I move we disapprove.
Motion second to disapprove. Let me see, a show of hands, all in favor to disapprove? All in favor to approve? Show of hands.
May he make the motion to approve. You need a motion to approve. And that will fail if the votes don't change, so then?
I move approval. For second?
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor, show of hands.
Motion to approve fails, therefore the motion goes forward as a disapproval.
Disapproval, okay. Item number 11, Commissioner Dwayne, carry your off your hook.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is item number 11 on your agenda. This is a request to amend the Harpeth Village Commercial Plan Unit Development to permit an automobile service facility on the subject property. This is, the Harpeth Village Shopping Center is located in the Bellevue area, south of Old Harding Pike, on the north side of Highway 100, just east of where the two roads intersect. This amendment request applies only to a pad site within that shopping center or within the plan unit development containing just over one acre of property. The pad site, highlighted in red, is located along Highway 100, just west of Temple Road in front of the Publix Grocery Store. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The zoning applicable to the property includes a base zoning of CL Commercial Limited, as well as the Commercial Plan Unit Development Overlay District. The PUD was established as a mixed-use plan unit development in 2005. It permitted 74 townhomes that you'll see outlined on this zoning map, just to the north of the commercial component of the PUD. And here's the PUD boundaries of the Harpeth Village Plan Unit Development. The PUD was amended by council in 2007 to increase the floor area permitted for commercial uses within this area. Both of those approved plans included use limitations, including the automobile services use. So it permitted commercial uses, but strictly prohibited certain uses. Automobile services was on that list of prohibited uses. This particular amendment request is to permit that specific use back into the PUD, but only for this portion, this pad site within the plan unit development. It would not permit the use in any other part of the PUD. As a matter of note, the base zoning, the CL zoning, permits the automobile service use, so it's strictly prohibited just by the PUD. Here's a snapshot of the plan accompanying the request. It includes a 7,000-square-foot, one-story building located central to the site. The proposed building would include six service bays. Four of the bays would be on the west side of the building. Two of the bays would be on the east side of the building. The retail portion of the building would be located on the south side of the site, while the bays would be located to the north of the site, away from Highway 100. All access is internal to the site. This amendment request and plan request specifically adds the automobile service use back into the PUD for this site only. There is a condition of approval which restricts all uses related to automobile service use, such that it is conducted entirely within the building. Highway 100 is designated as scenic arterial, and to support that, this plan includes a scenic landscape easement along Highway 100 and requires a Type A landscape buffer. This plan incorporates that. It also incorporates, or it incorporates additional landscaping along Highway 100, as well as around the perimeter of the site and internal to the site. The proposed plan complies with stormwater requirements. There are architectural and orientation requirements that are incorporated into this plan amendment. The proposed building will be composed entirely of brick, stone, and glass, as well, in order to support scenic highway, Highway 100. The building has an orientation requirement such that the pedestrian access, the retail component, is oriented to Highway 100, and the bays are oriented away from Highway 100. There are also sign limitations incorporated into this plan. The signs will be, or the ground sign permitted will be restricted to a monument sign. Pole signs will not be permitted. The monument sign will be restricted to five feet in height. It's shown located in the southwest corner of this site. And there are sidewalk improvements proposed with this plan as well. There is an expansion of the existing sidewalk along Highway 100 to support a proposed trail that will eventually run along this portion of Highway 100 in front of the site, and then there are sidewalks around the perimeter of the site. With those points, staff would conclude with a recommendation for approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. Item's open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and keep two back for rebuttal.
Yes, sir, I won't take 10 minutes. James Weaver Waller-Lanson, 511 Union Street, Nashville, here representing the applicant tire discounters. Automobiles had a hard month and a hard evening here tonight with people complaining about automobiles. I guess I'm here to celebrate the automobile. Our client's in the tire business. It's a new corporate entity to Middle Tennessee. This is their first store in Davidson County. You'll hear a little bit more about that in a second. I first want to thank staff. Staff's worked very closely with the client, as you can see from what's been presented by staff. This is a fairly detailed design, very in keeping with Highway 100 and the scenic nature of Highway 100. The only thing I would add to staff's recommendation is that this current pad inside what we refer to as the Public Shopping Center there in Bellevue, this site's currently approved for a six-bay gas station and a car wash. And so what we're talking about is taking that use and changing it and allowing and allowing an automobile service use. The PUD for this particular site's not the model of clarity, and there was a lot of discussion with staff on and off about, and with codes, about whether or not this change was actually needed or not. But at the end of the day, we believe and agree with staff that the better part of valor is to go ahead and go forward with this process. Councilman Mitchell's been very involved with this process. We had a community meeting. It was a very well-attended community meeting. At the end of the day, Councilman Mitchell asked for a show of hands if there was anyone opposed to this, and there was no one opposed to it at the community meeting. I know we have someone here tonight who's going to speak about it, but I just wanted the commission to know that we did have a community meeting. The PUD allows for retail use. My client's in the retail business, and they were in the retail business of selling tires. However, when you sell tires, you need to put those tires on the automobile, and that requires a slight change in the PUD to allow the auto-service designation and use. And again, we've reviewed staff's recommendations with regard to conditions, and those conditions are fine with us. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the client just for a couple of minutes to introduce themselves to you.
Good evening. I am Tim Dwyer with Leasman Engineering. We are the representative for the Civil Engineering Company for Tire Discounters. One thing that I would like to note, we do a lot of these stores for them in a lot of states, and we haven't had this experience yet. The community meeting with Mr. Mitchell and especially Dwayne has been very, very helpful throughout this process. And I just wanted to be noted that the staff has been absolutely spectacular with this process so far. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for, my name is Rafe Barber. Actually, my first name is Christopher Barber. I'm a regional manager with Tire Discounters. I live in Franklin, Tennessee. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of me this evening. We're a family-owned and operated company, 96 stores owned by the same person. We've built a store in Mount Juliet. We're going to open Saturday, and we are also going to open up a store in Smyrna. And we're very excited, tremendously excited, I could speak for everybody at our company, to be able to be a part of the community in Davidson County, Brentwood, and also the Bellevue area. I can tell you that we believe our culture and our commitment to our customers and our neighbors is very high. Our standards are very high. And I can tell you that we look forward to participating in the community and adding value with everything that we do. So I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. You will be allowed two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a member of the community--
Tell us who you are and where you live.
Chris Graffanino, 408 Trace Park Circle. As a member of the community in District 35, I would like to voice my opinion in opposition to Tire Discounters Amendment. Among my concerns is noise pollution, a factor, to my understanding, has not been fully considered in the staff recommendation. I brought with me today a document published by the CDC measuring the noise levels of impact wrenches used by auto-service centers like Tire Discounters. These tools are shown to produce sounds up to 111 decibels under load. Amendment 1 of Ordinance VL 2008-259 prohibits a business from producing any noise plainly audible near any home in a residential area. It cannot be overstated. These tools are central to the process of removing and replacing tires. Each tire removed requires discharging the wrench four times, and equal number would be required for each tire replaced. If Tire Discounters services 30 cars per day, as they have projected, they could potentially violate the noise ordinance hundreds of times per day. As to the point of service taking place within an enclosed building, I submit it would be unlikely, if not impossible, for Tire Discounters to be in compliance with both Metro Ordinance and OSHA regulations regarding noise. In conclusion, I ask you to reject the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello, I'm Dr. Scott Fraser. I live at 5621 Trace Side Drive. I'm a former board member of the Trace Side Homeowners Association. I've been to many community meetings, but this is my first planning commission meeting. But I felt this was an important enough topic that I wanted to attend. I've been a resident since 1999 in that area. In the 15 years, there's been a lot of appropriate development in the Harpeth Valley area, which gives us a nice place to dine and shop on a daily basis. The use that they're proposing, the gentleman that first spoke said that it was approved currently or previously for a six-bay. That was incorrect. It's six gas station islands. That's not a six-bay type of thing. Chris was saying the noise, they're not going to be doing it when it's fully enclosed. There's going to be bays open, especially in the summer. So there's a lot of noise. When you look at that picture, just above where that line is are homes. There's homes right across the street. There's evidence right there in the photo. The residents that I've talked to, since I was formerly on the board at Trace Side, have all said, hey, this is not a good thing. This is not what we were expecting. When that first planned unit development was done and it was a gas station, yes, that's something that we would go along with. If y'all would just keep it that, there wouldn't be a problem with that. If you wanted to put a restaurant in there, great. But why an auto? Why specifically, on a list of not-approved businesses, like a pawn shop and that type of thing, why all of a sudden can we now have auto there? The residents don't want it. There was nobody here other than the gentleman, excuse me, never spoken to me like this before. No other people are here supporting it. This is not a good thing. It's in such a visible and prominent location, so please vote it down.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening again. I'm Margot Chambers. I'm at 3803 Princeton Avenue in Nashville. I would just like to object to this, not because I don't like cars, but this planning commission doesn't like cars, and you're asking, you're allowing a developer to install a particular business not wanted in an area, and it goes against your transit plan. So if you're going to plan for less cars, please plan the business developments appropriately and listen to what the citizens want. Again, elections are coming up. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You've got two minutes for rebuttal, and then I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to vote.
Yes, sir. OSHA standards with regard, obviously, there are OSHA noise standards that apply to our employees. We have 96 of these stores across America, very, very cognizant of protecting our employees. All the work is done with the doors down. The doors only come up and down to let cars in and out. This particular company uses battery-powered lug removers, not the big ones that we think of like on NASCAR, that are powered by air, so they're much, much, much less loud, hence why they can do the work with the doors down. Great questions. I've given both these commenters my card. The client absolutely wants to talk to them. Again, we had a community meeting, addressed a lot of these discussions. We want to address everybody's discussions, including, I will add, the gentleman who lives in that house, it was pointed out, was also at our community meeting also. Thank you, and we would ask that it be approved with conditions.
Okay. I declare the public hearing closed. And any commissioners want to make any comments?
I believe this falls into one of those categories where there is not a compelling planning reason to object, based on everything we've heard and the entire sort of history. If there are political reasons beyond planning, then that can happen. It can be rejected. But I concur with the staff recommendation and would move we approve.
Any other comments? Motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have anything from Parks for us?
No reports.
There is no executive committee report. Walter, you have anything from the courthouse? You've got a quick--
Quick, we're in the process of budget. We made our presentation, but most importantly, your next meeting on April 24th will begin at 5:30 in this location due to a conflict with the election commission. 5:30 next meeting. We will remind you several times.
Other comments? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.